Good evening. This meeting for the town council for June 3, 2012 is now called. Please rise.
Counselor Del Vento.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Judge Dominic Russo, passed away.
He did.
Yeah, longtime judge in East Boston District Court, very highly respected gentleman. So could have a moment of silence for Judge Dominic. Thank you.
Counselor Cala.
Present.
Counselor Sanford.
Counselor Bancori.
Here.
Counselor Terry.
Here.
Counselor Wayagen.
Counselor Mayo.
Vice President Del Vento.
Present.
President Gill.
Present.
The call is present, and we'll proceed with the meeting. Could I have a motion for the minutes from May 20, 2014, as listed?
Motion by counsel.
Second.
Every second by counsel. For all, any discussion? If not, all those who pay to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, we have four public hearings tonight. The first one is a transfer of $30,000 from the Town Council Reserve to Veteran Services. We'll call that hearing the order. Does anybody have any input on that hearing? If not, that hearing is closed, and we move on to transfer of $300,000 from sewer retained earnings to sewer stabilization fund. Any comment on that one?
Mr. President.
Yes.
The one thing I will say is the items that are being -- the finance commission had a meeting on May 27 on all those -- on the issues that we're going to handle tonight.
That being -- excuse me. That hearing is closed. We are moving to transfer $300,000 from the water retained earnings to the water stabilization fund. If anybody wished to be heard, we'll close that hearing. The poll petition for National Grid for the underground facilities on Crest Ave to Grover's Ave. Anyone?
I'd like to represent National Grid.
Okay.
I don't know how you run your meeting.
You can speak in favor or opposed to?
Oh, I'm --
I work for National Grid, the engineering department.
My name's Mary Ellen Murphy, and I'm here to petition the city for this -- the installation of these underground lines, the lines that are going across Grover Street from 0-131. Should have a pad mount transformer at Galvez School with this going to be, I think, 27 units built there.
Okay. Does anybody else want to comment on that?
Chief. Just, you know, it's important for National Grid to realize strategically that area has a lot of truck traffic at this time, so we're going to have to ask them to communicate with the town and possibly do night work or weekend work if they come across Crest Ave and not interfere with the sand being trucked in, you know, at the rate and volume that we're doing. It would be almost impossible to have a project on Crest Ave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments on that? Yes.
Well, we have -- I'm representing contractors that are doing that work, and I'll have to -- I think it will take a day or two to do this work, and we will have to get a hold of the city somehow because it's going to be an alternate route for people. That is a well-driven street.
Yeah, that route is blocked, committed for two years, from 9:00 to 3:00 Monday through Friday.
Oh, I see.
For the next two years. So they'll have to do it on a Saturday or an evening.
Yeah, I think that's --
Because there's no parking on it. It's committed for travel to the beach for the sand. If there's no further comment, that hearing is closed as well, and we move on to public comment. Seeing none, we're moving right along. Correspondence, we have none. Move on to the Finance Committee report. Counselor Del Vento, start with the senior work program.
The Finance -- the senior work program is not before the Finance Committee, before the Finance Commission.
Commission, right.
And that is yet to be acted on by the commission.
So the senior work program is on hold with the commission?
Yes.
Okay.
The Finance Committee met on May 27, 7 o'clock, in the Harvard hearing room, President myself, Counselor Sanford. The items on the agenda were transfer of $15,000 from Fund 671, transfer of $300,000 from water retained earnings, transfer of $300,000 water sewer retained earnings, and transfer of $30,000 Town Council Reserve to Veteran Services. All items were discussed, were presented by town officials, they're required, and we'll all move recommending positive action to the committee, to full council, as well as the positive action on the Fund Act.
Okay, very good. Moving on to the DPW Committee. Counselor Mayo is not here yet, so we'll postpone that until he gets here. And the House vote, rules and regulations are in the hands right now of the Planning Board on hold while they're --
I believe that, Paul, you sit on the Rules and Ordinances Committee.
I did.
Yeah, Nick reported on that.
But that was in economic development, right? Or was that the Rules Report?
That was Finance.
Finance and then Rules.
The place that gets -- has been recommended to Fin -- was recommended out of Rules to Finance.
Okay, so no Rules and Ordinances Report on that now.
Right, he reported both.
My mistake.
So there was a joint committee.
I can't -- we put a favor of the out of both.
Right.
Why, I remember.
Correct.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. And the House vote is in the hands of the Planning Board at the present time. Moving on to all business. I'm sorry, Town Manager, report.
We're getting very fast, man. I'll try to keep with the steam.
Keep with the momentum rolling.
Yeah, the momentum. Well, a couple of quick things to note. I have invited Dr. Scott, who's the general manager at MBTA, to Winthrop to come and discuss some issues with regard to establishing a viable ferry service as a matter of ongoing enterprise. And she'll be coming down on June 30 to meet with me. Certainly any member of the council, assuming we don't violate any rules, you know, I'd like to have someone from the council there as well who takes an interest in the issue to be present and invite Dr. Scott to the landing, sure around, let her understand the transportation challenges and needs of the community, and see how we can, you know, get the MBTA to get on board, if you will, of the ferry service for the community, and hopefully create some transferability, you know, and way in which we can not be an isolated service, but one that works in tandem with the greater, you know, public transportation entity in the region. So that's something that I'm doing at the end of the month. I met with representatives of administration of the Mass General Hospital here at the Lyceum Room at E.B. Newton. We walked -- Peter Gill was present as well, and we walked those representatives around the center of town, talked about the very real need for enhanced primary care medicine for the community. There seems to be a sincere interest on their part to explore the viability of perhaps a new model under the Obamacare, you know, Affordable Care Act, and they're looking at ways in which they can meet our need. And so we hope to have a new -- an additional meeting this summer where they will present, you know, a strategy on how they may be able to serve the community in an enhanced way, perhaps even with a physical location in Winthrop. We are coordinating a meeting with the -- on a community forum with regard to the FEMA flood maps. We're structuring that map, making some calls into FEMA representatives, and are trying to establish a date for that. One hasn't been established yet, but we have -- we expect to receive a contract in any day now from our consultant, Woods Hole Institute, to move forward with the appeal of those amendments to our flood maps, and in the meantime coordinate a public forum on the matter. And thank you, Counselor Cal, for participating in that conversation and helping us coordinate that. I want to announce that our farmer's market will begin June 15 from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in French Square. The event will be every other Sunday until September 29. And we actually have Rio Farms showing up. Three, in fact, will be selling produce to the Winter community. And a number of other events and effects of that market will be there as well. So we're looking to -- for it to be, you know, our -- not just our attempt at a farmer's market, but a legitimate farmer's market this year. So stay -- I hope you all get the word out and come down on Sundays and participate in that effort. I met last week with Patricia Gentile of the North Shore -- she's the president of the North Shore Community College to explore ideas of expanding adult education to Winthrop, particularly perhaps, you know, in future use as a candidate for future use of the middle school, if after a couple of years that school becomes vacant and available for use. And, you know, we talked about the idea of a tourism, hotel, restaurant, and culinary program that may work in conjunction with, you know, the -- our neighbors in those industries that we're so proximate to that, you know, perhaps there'd be a very, you know, real way that we could develop a cooperative program of adult learning and job training as well with those industries and to do something in Winthrop. And she's eager to continue to talk, and she'll be coming out next week to explore site opportunities. And I invited John Mossero to participate in that conversation as well. So more to learn on the possibilities of having adult education in Winthrop. We've had a conversation begun with the DCR about the quality of the sand as part of the beach process project. We understand that sand has been tested and that they'll respond officially in the next few days with a full response to those questions raised about ensuring that the sand quality that's coming in on our beach is going to be of good quality and safe for all. So they're preparing that response for us. And I'd like to ask the CFO to report on his progress with the net school spending analysis and agreements.
Okay, so I put in your Dropbox two documents. One pertains to net school spending analysis. And just a little bit of background, each year annually, we report net school spending to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as part of our closeout with them. Included in our net school spending submission is town expenses incurred on behalf of the schools. There's supposed to be an agreement in place between the schools and the town that basically provides an understanding as to what types of expenses would be included in this report. So what I've done here is I've drafted a report, I've scheduled out these costs that are incurred by the town on behalf of the schools, and I provided all the support behind that. Last night, the Citizens Finance Committee met and reviewed it, the superintendent and the town manager have reviewed it, and now I am putting it out there for the town councils to take a look at it. If you have any thoughts or feedback, I will take it into consideration and make adjustments accordingly. I have a couple of comments that came out of last night's meeting that I still have to flush out and research a little bit. The next step is to do just that and then to bring the draft report, if you will, to the school committee. And ultimately, what I'd like to see happen is that the town manager and the superintendent of schools sign off on it, and we would then amend our end-of-year report for budgeted FY14 with the state to reflect the costs included in the agreement.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm going to comment to that because I was at the meeting last night. If any of the Finance Commission Advisory Committee wants to say anything on it, but it was very enlightening. I guess there's CMR 10.404, which kind of guides that we should have a subpoena in place. And it's -- all it is is opening and full documentation of who's paying for what, which we -- it's already occurring, whether it's already being reported is one thing, but this will put us in a position where the report, the net school spending report is sent to the state, it's the -- I don't want to say -- you know, all the other -- all the reporting, all the numbers will tie together, everything will be open and public for every expense that's incurred, who's paying for what's done, and it's just more coming into the 21st century.
And it'll be updated annually. So that's the net school spending analysis. The other document that I put into the Dropbox is an analysis of water sewer costs by expense category, and it schedules out the fiscal year 12 actual, fiscal year 13 actual, fiscal year 14 budgeted. And it just kind of gives you a sense of what's in the total budget and how much of it is the MWRA assessment, how much of it is personnel, et cetera, debt service. So I kind of marked this draft because I put it together. I thought it was interesting that Town Manager asked me to pass it on, and once we get -- once FY14 closes, we will update it accordingly to include the FY14 actuales.
Thank you.
I think it's a great document as a beginning point for, you know, the -- we always have a discussion, I think, and rightfully so, each year about water and sewer and what goes into the rates and, you know, how the budget is reflected back into, you know, the various component parts and sort of keep our -- all of us aright on the ball about what the rates are and what brings us to those rates. And so what we're starting to do is develop a template that hopefully can carry on year to year, that we all become familiar with, and we can see where assessments are, where charges are, where costs are allocated. And, you know, it just helps to, you know, gain a level of confidence and understanding for us as well as the public to understand, you know, how all of the rates are derived from, you know, our budget. Because our budget's dense, and it's hard for some folks to go through. But if we have a separate, clearly articulated instrument that they can look at and see that that reflects, you know, essentially the distillation of all the facts and what we go through each year in terms of establishing those budgets, I think it's going to be a helpful educational tool.
That's my report. Any more questions?
That concludes my report, except, you know, I know that the fire chief was going to talk tonight, and I don't know if he's here.
He's here.
Public comment occurred, chief. Do you want to just jump in and talk about a couple of things that you brought to my attention today?
In regards to, one was the fireworks. There'll be another letter in the paper this week. We love the show a little bit. Water donations are coming in, so we're doing well. It's for Friday night, so it hopefully will be the kickoff of a great holiday weekend. On the Deer Island matters, there was a complaint lodged as an odor control complaint by one of the watchdogs on Taps Avenue, and I don't say that disrespectfully. And the authority quickly determined the odor to be a grid truck that was coming in to pick up screen cleanings, and the contract reads that this contractor shall clean the truck prior to going into Deer Island. They hadn't done it. The company was cited. It's their second time that they've been cited, three sightings, and they had done with the authority. It was a private contractor. They returned a call and reported to the resident that did call, and he was very much satisfied with that. And the other thing is on June 10, and again, the subject's changed, the authority is bringing in 300,000 gallons of the fuel oil which they run that thermal power plant on, and this happens approximately four times a year, and they'll be under complete police escort. They will be coming in over the Belle Isle Bridge. The Belle Isle Bridge now has been raided, so vehicles can pass over. They'll be bringing in 8,000 gallons per truck. They will all be escorted, and it will probably commence for a couple of days, being anywhere from, you know, five to eight trucks a day. Is that be correct, chief, somewhere in that vicinity?
Yes, five to eight trucks depending on the hours. The hours usually are seven to three, they don't go beyond that. So they could go four days. They might necessarily need a fifth day, which would be the following Tuesday, if the fifth day is needed.
And just so you have the history, you hear so much about the methane they generate. Anytime that there is a storm brewing and it's going to impact the coast, Deer Island goes completely on auxiliary power. They completely disconnect from Boston Edison across Harbor Cable for the simple reason that it takes so long to tie the plant back up if it ever was to go down. So they have -- and anybody who's taken it to where they have two big jet engines down there in the thermal power plant that runs the entire island, and that's what they burn the oil with. So this winter, we did have several storms, and they did go on emergency power, even though they didn't lose power as a precaution so the plant functions normally during the event of a power loss. And this is just to replace the fuel. They have 500,000 -- 500,000 gallons storage capability in the thermal power plant just as you go into the lab.
Thank you, chief. Can you just give the detail on the fireworks again? Where does the money go?
Well, there'll be a heads and transcript if you happen to purchase it, but it's going to the Winter Fireworks, 40 Pauline Street, and we have an account up here, and, you know, again, people love their 4th of July fireworks. The money's been coming in, so anything, anybody can do.
When you leave, is there a check to put?
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Yes.
Just one thing on the trucking, and I know the escort's going to be great. Especially this time of year, we have that little situation at Delby's Corner where people kind of have a tendency to pack a little fur -- closer to Washington Street in the no-parking zone. I don't know if we want to have the ability maybe to comb that off those days, to get a little more guarantee that when these guys come in, they can make the swing, or if we can -- I don't know if Steve's around, but if we ever -- if we paint -- next time we paint lines, if we can actually kind of paint that area out, I think --
Usually the police do cone it, that corner.
Yeah, the escort sees that corner on a far wide swing and stops the traffic, usually at Perkins, to allow the truck to make that light swing. So but certainly they'll have a look at that on the days of the escort. If they could make it simpler, we'll certainly do as well.
Counselor President?
Yes, Counselor.
Chief, I was just wondering if the group from Point Shirley are aware of this? Has anyone notified them, you know, how they want to stay in the loop and they want to have that communication going with the MWRA?
And we have made it known to them that the council president had requested if there was anything to report pertaining to Winthrop, it would be done at these council meetings. But I'm in contact with them quite often, so I would make sure that we're aware of that.
I think they should know the dates, maybe the times, and, you know, how frequent and how long it's going to be. I think it's --
We can do that, and we will.
Okay, thank you.
To repeat, by any chance, any people here for the House vote? The House vote issue is with the Planning Board. It only appeared here as a placeholder. There was a misunderstanding. The Planning Board is dealing with it on Monday night, same time, same place here. So it's only on our agenda as a placeholder that it has been referred to them. So you can stay and enjoy the scene if you'd like to, but you're welcome. We don't want to hold you here for the night only to find out it's not on the agenda. Okay?
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to all business. We had a little juggle in the agenda. We did it, set it up a little bit incorrectly, so you'll notice as we're going along under all business, I'm not following the agenda. So first motion under all business, actually appeared under new business before, so that first one is a motion by Town Manager McKenna, that the council accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law 32B, Section 20, Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund for the purpose of establishing said fund by taking any action relative there to. Do you want to make a comment on that motion, Mr. McKenna?
Yes, that's to authorize us under the law to be able to utilize a trust format for the OPEB purposes.
I'm sorry, procedurally, I forgot. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Terry, seconded by Counselor Del Vento. All those who pay to say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. I'm sorry.
I will abstain just because I just arrived.
All right, let's have --
What were you reading?
Let's have Jim go ahead, finish his explanation.
Sure. 32B, Section 20, Other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. It's, you know, as you know, it's been a standing matter from our audit findings that we have an outstanding unfunded liability of some magnitude, and it's -- most communities have felt it important to show some effort to start buying down some of that unfunded liability through making actual appropriation in their annual budgets. And but to do it in a way that sequesters the funds in a fund, in a trust fund, to be retained and held if and when it is necessary to actually utilize that fund to buy down liability that's not been adequately funded. And we need to establish the fund. So as a precatory matter, prior to adoption of the general fund budget, where we have allocated $50,000 to -- towards this as our first step, we need to establish the holding cell for this, and that's what this rule does. It allows us to create the trust.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion from the councils? If not, all those who pay to say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Now, the process of the -- as we continue on, is we're going to take the -- read the motion for the budget, and then there will be some amendments to the motion, and then as we adopt the amendments, then the last thing is we will pass the motion of the budget as amended. So the motion before us right now is pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 32, and in accordance with the charter of the town of Winthrop, I move that the Town Council vote to adopt the Town Manager's proposed annual operating and capital budget, the Fiscal 2015, as amended by the report of the Winthrop Finance Commission, inclusive of personnel salaries and operating expenses set forth therein. And that to meet said appropriations, the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $41,128,786 by taking any action, other action relative there to. Could I have a motion? Terry, seconded by Counselor Sanford. Is there any discussion? Can you make -- At this point? Yes.
Do you want to use us first?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
At this point? Yes.
Can you make a motion to add or take something away from the budget?
We're going to do amendments right now.
I didn't hear what you said. Thanks.
Motion submitted by Counselor President Gill, I move that we transfer $60,000 from other amounts raised as the cherry assessment to the capital improvement budget for the purpose of prefunding the lease purchase of a fire engine as identified as a priority four in the capital improvement plan included in the FY15 budget, Chapter 14. Said increase is a result of reduction in estimated municipal charges recorded on the cherry sheet. Sim, would you just comment on that? I'm sorry, but I have a motion.
You made a motion. Do you have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Cal.
Counselor President. Counselor President.
All right, so part of our local aid numbers that we receive every year, one is on the receipts, which includes the Chapter 70 and the other categories of aid. Then the other are the charges that we have to pay, that are paid through the cherry sheet. And one of those items, the charter school sending tuition, was originally -- the original assessment was 200,000, roughly $200,000, and it dropped to 140. And I called DOR and inquired about it, and apparently the governor's budget uses pre-enrollment numbers from the prior April for their budget, because that's when those numbers are released, apparently. And then they update it in April when they do the House budget. So as a result, that number changed drastically from the original to the present, and that's where the -- And then they update it in April when they do the House budget. So, so as a result, that number changed drastically from the original to the present, and that's where the surplus of speed has come from.
When CFO pointed this out at the last meeting, that there may in fact be some excess funding that we, because of a lesser amount that we needed to spend. I had heard Chief Flanagan's plea to the Finance Commission and to the Capital Improvements Committee regarding the condition and the age of the pumper, fire engine we have, and I saw this as an opportunity to jump in and get that safety issue. He actually told us that someday that engine could fail, so I am requesting the council to move that money and jumpstart the purchase of the fire engine.
Any comments, questions, concerns, of the council? Move the question?
And again, this was a good faith effort to let them know that we're interested in the pump, as we talked about before, and there may be some grant money, some other financing involved.
Well, what we really like to do with this, and maybe with some other money that I can come up with my own budget, it takes anywhere from nine to 11 months, wherever you get on the assembly line, to get a piece of fire apparatus. I have requested an engine before, which this council graciously approved, and I assured you you wouldn't have to pay for it, and you did, and I would like to, you know, you never know what's coming down the line, but I'd like to say that.
So are you guaranteeing that there's no money?
But what I'm saying is, again, I hope that, you know, this will not be on the town tax rate more than the first payment.
Thank you. And it takes about a year for this to get on the road?
That's correct, and we won't make a payment till maybe May of the next fiscal 15.
Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna comment, so this would be if passed, set up as a miscellaneous article, and if, in the event that it went further than May into the next fiscal year, it would just be carried forward.
The money would stay in that account?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Madam?
We have to make up 25,000 somehow? Is that what we?
Roughly.
Five big?
Well, what did happen is, again, we were on a 10-year replacement of our bunker gear, and I'm pretty sure that the manager had set aside one-third of it for the next three years. I am gonna wait and see how this plays out, and I, if I do purchase it on this fiscal year, if we have to come up with the money, I have the money to make this transaction complete for this upcoming year.
But that puts you back a year on your safety equipment?
On the replacement gear, and we do have enough money in our own equipment budget to, you know, to patch up the necessity we have for turnout gear. We have had some new appointments over the last few years, and we buy them new gears and come on. So, there's some play there, I just can't be buying new gear and, like, in the casino thing, we had a, we've been to Revere 22 times, and when I send this 18-year-old engine to Revere, our town is backed up with a 28-year-old engine, so the time is coming after the transition. So, I think all gears are on deck, how we're gonna figure out the balance, but I think there's some play that we're gonna figure out.
But it's 25 grand, so we're not killing ourselves, so. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the whole.
Any more questions, discussion?
Just on this motion.
On this amendment?
Yeah.
Call for vote, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. This one's Jim's next. Okay, the motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, F and 1/2, in accordance with the Town Charter of the Town of Winter, I move that the town council vote to adopt the town manager's proposed annual operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2015 for the following enterprise funds, inclusive of personnel, operating expenditures, and capital expenditures as provided therein. Sewer Enterprise, $4,627,322. Water Enterprise, $2,856,182. Excuse me, Harbor Enterprise, $328,600. Rank Enterprise, $261,221. And Recreation Enterprise, $338,995. And further, to meet these expenditures, such user charges as necessary shall be authorized and assessed in accordance with those proposed rates and charges as set forth with the town manager's 2015 budget, inclusive of sums received from other fees, permits, fines, and other designated sources or take any action relative thereto. Motion?
Second motion?
This is, I need a motion. Motion from Counsel Lutery, seconded by Counsel Delvento. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Text of the motion, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, E and 1/2, and in accordance with the Charter of the Town of Winter, I move that the town council vote to authorize the revolving account entitled COA Revolving Account. Said account will be funded by miscellaneous receipts collected by the council on age and will be used to provide services to the elderly. Through the council on age, the limit on the total amount which may be expended from this fund is set at $30,000. Additionally, any balance remaining at the end of fiscal year 15 will remain with said fund or take any action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Counsel Cal, seconded by Vice President Delvento. Any discussion on the motion? Amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. By the town, submitted by the town manager, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53, E and 1/2, in accordance with the Town Charter of the Town of Winter, I move that the town council vote to reauthorize the revolving account entitled, quote, EB Newton Revolving Account, end of quote, as provided in the detailed summary of the town manager's budget for FY 2015. And further, to meet these proposed expenses, some shall be, sums shall be received in rental revenue or other designated sources to be expended by the town manager for the purposes of paying wages and expenses provided therein. Additionally, any balance remaining at the end of FY '15 will remain with said fund or take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Vice President Delvento, seconded by Counsel Sanford. Is there any discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. And then we have two budget recommendations by the Finance Commission. Do you want to make those?
Back to the main motion, in that it's to amend the Conservation Commission Personnel Line to increase from 4,000 to 5,500 and reduce Town Council Reserve, 0111-052-5761000 from 160,000 to 158,500.
Motion by Counsel Delvento.
Second.
Second by Counsel Lutery. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah. Can I add some, can I add two things onto that? I'd like to, can I use this line item to move my, I would still like to reduce the senior work program by $2,500.
That'll come as a separate amendment?
Separate amendment to this one.
On this one?
Yes. When that comes up, I'd like to discuss it.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it came up, and I, and I'd like to add something also. Do I add it here, or where?
It was a separate amendment, we're gonna one amendment this time. Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Counsel?
There's another amendment recommended by the Finance Commission, I'll be making that, and that's to amend the Building Maintenance Division Personnel Line, 011-925-1511100, personnel from 161,000, 944, $161,944 to 167,944. And reduce Town Council Reserve, 0111-052-5761000, from 158,500 to 152,500.
Motion by Counsel Delvento, seconded by Counsel Lutery. Any discussion on that motion? On that motion? Not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. One more. Is it error correction? It was a typographical error, Tim, do you just wanna explain that?
Sure, yeah, on the second to last page of the general fund detail, under the fiscal year 12 final budget, there's, there was a formula reversal, transposition between the Conservation Commission and New England Voctech. So it appears that the Conservation Commission spent $698,000 in fiscal year 13, and New England Voctech was zero. So, I just reversed them, it's under that fiscal year 2013, it didn't have any impact on the bottom line, really had no impact on the '15 budget, it was really just reporting on the 13, but however, I wanted to correct it and provide a correction.
A round of applause by the commission and a back, I can tell.
Yes, they're catching it. Yes, sir.
So, vote to accept the page as amended?
Yes, motion to accept the budget as amended. Oh, yes, motion to accept the page as amended, okay. Motion?
Motion, sorry.
Motion by Counsel Sanford, seconded by Counsel Lutery. Any discussion on the motion? Not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Madam, did you have any motion?
The 12, the 12, is that the one you're talking about?
No, that's later. No, we're still on the motion, on the budget.
So, yeah. I'd like to add $2,500 to the budget from the council reserve to get a big screen TV in here, hooked up to a computer with internet access, because I'll tell you something, you sit here for the licensing meeting, and the planning board meeting, and the appeals meeting, and if you could zing in on the areas that they're talking about, with street level views, and with down views, you have a better perspective of what's going on when they make decisions about property lines and sightlines, and where is it, is that grandma's house, and where is it? And get it hooked up here, you spend $2,500. Tim spent a ton of work on that rate thing, everybody, that should be up on the wall, people should see it, so I'm hoping that someone, put up 2,500, three grand, get a TV, get a computer, get it hooked up, let's start to, you know, get the things looking right.
We have a motion from Counsel Madam to transfer $2,500 from council reserve, where would that go to, Tim?
Technology fund, yeah.
To technology fund?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a second? A second, seconded by Counsel Corry. Any discussion on the motion? Not?
Question?
Yeah.
Do you feel that's enough money? Do you have an idea of, I mean?
I wasn't, I was shocked that the positives. I'd like to do the job right, but I don't wanna get carried away, you know, so.
That was just a question, you know. I concur with the concept. We'll need to defer to some of your expertise in terms of how we utilize software relative to how, what goes into it.
We just had an internet connection.
Right, but if we, if we can, you know, make sure that it functions properly and work with our IT folks to do the things you want it to do.
I have to sweat to get the job done.
Is there any further discussion?
I don't, I, so maybe, you know, I don't know what it would be, I mean, I doubt it, a computer today, a laptop like we all have, is four or $500. A big screen TV must be about $1,500, give or take 50, 60 inches, 70 inches to get that covered.
I think we can cover it under.
And then, and then you get the boys in town to rig it up and get going and...
Is there any further discussion on the motion? I'll read it again, motion by Counsel Madam to transfer $2,500 from council reserve fund to the technology fund. All those in favor say ayes. Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Congratulations.
Two and a half years, man.
Counsel say aye.
Just remind Counsel Madam, it's not on the road yet.
That's one quick. Okay, go back to the, to the main motion as amended. I'll read it again, pursuant to Massachusetts laws, Chapter 44, Section 32, in accordance with the Charter of the Town of Winter, I move that the town council vote to adopt the manager's proposed annual operating and capital budget for FY 2015 as amended by the report of the Winter Finance Committee and inclusive of our personnel salaries and operating expenses set forth therein. And to meet said appropriations, the town will raise the appropriate sum of $41,148,786 or take any other action relative thereto. If there's no further discussion, on the motion as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Finance Commission and Finance Committee and School Committee, thank you all for your very, very diligent efforts.
Excuse me, Peter, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with when you do the budget. If we, as a school department, have a question on that budget, is there a place for us to speak on that?
We had the, the budget hearing was last week, the last meeting. I'll honor a question if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, and I'm sorry if that...
No, that's all right, no, go ahead.
If I have, I thought we were presenting for each individual department's budget separately, not, you know, as a whole, so, excuse me if I'm...
No, that's all right.
Because what I'm gonna ask is probably not appropriate at this time, but I'll ask for it anyway, especially since everybody's in such a good mood to give away money, so...
We didn't give any away, we just transferred it.
Transfer, well, I could ask for a transfer too. I guess what I'm doing is today, I'm asking that the town council consider appropriating or transferring $150,000 to our school budget. Right now, we have a budget of, or a proposed budget that was accepted, I guess, which, I guess I was not paying attention to properly, 16,950 for our budget. And the reason that I'm asking for $150,000 is because that's how much we're below level service budget. Last year, we were $150,000 below level service budget, and if I'm correct, and I could be, and someone can correct me, but I think it was over $200,000 the year before. So total in three years, we're talking about a half a million dollars below our level service budgets over the last three years. And, and the reason that I'm approaching you all is because, right now, our school system is on a threshold of being provided with a state-of-the-art facility, but equally important is to provide an equally, a state-of-the-art education for our children. The budgets that we've been given, and I, I've talked to Jim, and I've talked to Tim, they've been gracious to talk to me, and Peter, and many other people, is that, I'm saying is that what we're doing to our school system, and I'm not ignoring our other departments, I'm not trying to minimize them, but it's my job to speak for the school, for our school system and our children, as it is the rest of our committee. And I'm just saying, if we don't start providing money that improves our school system, not just maintaining, we've got to set the goals, and I believe that the superintendent has begun to allow us to have a fuller education by providing more music and more arts and more languages, it just makes our system a fuller education. But besides that, we need the money and the tools. I have heard from some of our council talking about, how can we give you more money if you're not improving your scores? I believe that's unfair to say that, but you have a right to say it. But what I'm saying to you, though, is if we continually being provided below level service budget, we can't, and I'm not saying money provides scores, but what money can provide can cause scores, we can get better tools, better resources, more teachers, more tutors, more before and after-school programs, more program-storing school to support children who may be lagging behind in their testing scores, and not just testing, because I personally don't believe that that's the be-all of everything, and, but I'm just asking you to consider, and I guess it's, I'm not in the right ballpark right now, Peter, but I'm just saying, I really believe that we need more funding in our school department. I, I know that we have, and I know that Jim has talked to me for a lengthy time to help me to understand the stabilization... me to understand the stabilization fund that you have put together. And I compliment and I give kudos to our town council and Jim and Tim who've been there to provide it. And last year was the $750,000. This is $1.51 million this year for our stabilization fund. And I know that when I spoke to Peter and Jim, they're saying for the future of our town. It brings up our rating, it allows us to save money on the latter end in 10, 15, 20 years on our percentages for that funding, for our new schools and whatever. But we're looking at what's going on right now and the future of our kids. And I know that you all care about our kids too. Sometimes I speak and I offend, and I don't mean to offend, that you all don't care about children and education. I know that you do, and I know that Jim does, you know, especially. But that still isn't going to stop us from saying, we need more funding. And we need funding from, whether it's a transfer, whether, if there's a possibility of us somewhere along the way getting a transfer somewhere, I'm asking you to think about it and consider it. And even if I am, what, my husband would say a dime short or whatever.
You are. You're late, but, and I appreciate your passion for the school system, and we all have committed to education.
I know.
But it is, the budget has passed, so...
But I would like to say something. I do, I admire Mary Alice's passion, and I know it comes from the heart and I appreciate it, and I know the kids appreciate it. I think it's important for everybody, and although, you know, the budget did go up a little over last year, not level service by the budget. However, we have to understand that we also have one less building. So, you know, dollars per building has gone up substantially. I mean, we're losing, I want to say 200,000 square feet of educational space, and we still maintain an increase in the dollars for education. And going back to one of the first things Mary Alice said, when she says she thinks, I think she said basically that the education is just as important as the new school, I think the education is more important than the new school. Fancy building is great, and it's fantastic investment that the town made, but if it goes on inside the walls, that's even more important. And I commend the school committee and the superintendent for their job. I think we also have to realize that we went from four buildings to three, so 25% less buildings, and we were, again to the kudos of, excuse me, of the superintendent, that we were able, I believe, not to have any layoffs. We rolled in all employees, basically from four buildings to three. You know, there's substantial savings in utility bills that has gone to, I think, some other programs and some new teachers, and I think that that's great. So, you know, it might not look level service, but I think dollar for dollar, it's a very good increase considering, you know, you're 25% less space and you have more dollars to spend. And I'm not sure other savings other than, you know, utility costs...
But we're still...
I have them all listed down by...
And I hear Chip, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I hear what Chip is saying, and I can't disagree with him to say we've gone from four to three. But we have put money away, and again, you all know this, for extraordinary maintenance. And we are trying to maintain. The biggest thing that voters had about providing our town with a new school is the maintenance of our buildings. And I think that we need to keep that in mind, to keep our maintenance up high, so that we're not sitting there when we get a brand-new building and say, oh, you know, now we've got a bigger building, so we can't afford to keep the amount of custodial men and women in our, in that department. And I'm just saying is that, yes, we are, but we're still providing the same paper, materials and everything else. And we also are looking at the expansion of all of these children in our building. We're squeezing children into three buildings. And I think that our school building committee and John has done a phenomenal job in with the swing space to help us provide better space and also thinking about the children and the space. But we also have to keep providing for the monies that will come. I mean, I can't foresee us to say in two years from now, when we are finally completing our building, to say, okay, everyone, can you now give us about a million extra dollars? Because we have all of this. That's not going to happen either. So if we don't look to the future and build on that future and build on the improvements that we need, then in two years or two and a half years, we're going to be sitting here saying, gee, we have an awesome building, but unfortunately, we had to lay off 10 teachers or whatever. I'm going to ask you, put on 10 teachers or whatever.
Thank you. The budget process has been going on for about six months.
I know, Peter.
And tonight was the end of it. But I do, I appreciate your passion, and so does the Finance Commission, and so does the town manager and the whole council. And we certainly, we are charged with the responsibility to, for the budget for the whole community, and that's how it came on. Moving on into old business.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I just say, I have to say to Mary Alice, although the budget is done, if there's a specific project that is not in the budget, but needs to be done, you can always come here for a transfer.
Okay.
And also in the agreement we made with Hohegan Sunnow, they're getting an extra $500,000 a year that's going to be, I'm afraid, to the school department. So that should help a lot as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, excuse me. Council Mail.
I have spent a lot of time going to these meetings, both your school committee and the Finance Committee meeting, and despite that, I don't have a tenth of the knowledge on your intricacies the way Council LeTerry does. And I have to tell you that, sitting through all that, he brings up some very valid points. And I don't want to repeat them all because I agree with them. And I also have passion for your program, but I'll take something from Council of Moncuri, and that's something that I also brought up a while ago. And that is that I understand your budget and I understand where you are, but I also understand that there may be some specific programming that could bring good benefit to kids. And that could be, you know, test prep programming, it could be parenting skills, it could be outward-bound type programs. And if the school department came up and made a valid case, then I have no problem putting that into consideration, and I'm sure other people on the council would also. But for this part of the budget, I'm very, very comfortable with what you guys have in light of the comments that I feel and expressively what Council LeTerry said.
Just a quick word. No one's your biggest advocate than my daughter Melanie. She just loves to hear, yeah, a former student here in town. One of the things we've worked hard on as a council, we worked out on the budget with the commission and with the Finance Committee and so on and so forth, is making sure, and I know your passion about the school, making sure, remember, we're one whole town, and we do work, and I'm glad you mentioned it, no particular department outweighs another. And I think that's important from this council's point of view, from the town manager's point of view and superintendent, and that's what we've worked hard on. We never want that perception to happen. And as the council said, you know, a little while ago, if there's something that indeed you're looking towards for programming or a specific thing, please come before us. Can't always grant it, but we are definitely open to it. We are one town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else on the council? Council Finance Committee met on 27th, and out it came several motions that have been pending. The first one out of committee is to move the council budget, approve budgetary transfer $15,000 from Fund 671, the Recreation Retained Earnings Fund, the Recreation Enterprise Fund accounts for $4,650 for permanent salaries, $8,500 summer program, and $1,850 for purchase services. Coming out of committee, there's no need for a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Also coming from committee, that meeting was a motion that...
Excuse me. Jim McInnes is recusing myself in that motion.
Okay.
Jim McInnes, you refuse to take...
I move that the town council will approve the budgetary transfer $30,000 with Town Council Reserve account 011052576100 to the Veterans Services Contract Services account 0154352544350 for the purpose of funding veterans' benefits in accordance with national law, chapter 115. I'll take any other action relative thereto. Coming out of committee, no need for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Another one from committee will be to move the town council transfer $300,000 from SOAR retained earnings to the Water...
SOAR stabilization.
I gotta type one on this one, sorry. Let me reread that. I move the town council transfer $300,000 from the SOAR retained earnings to the SOAR Capital Stabilization Fund for the purpose of funding the SOAR Enterprise Capital Improvement Fund. I'll take any other action relative thereto. Coming from committee, there's no need for a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And also, the last one that came from committee was to move that the town council transfer $300,000 from Water Retained Earnings to the Water Capital Stabilization Fund for the purpose of funding the Water Enterprise Capital Improvement Fund. I'll take any action relative thereto. Coming from committee, no need for a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. We have a motion that National Grid be and hereby is granted permission to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way or ways hereinafter referred to, and to make the necessary house connections along with said extensions as requested in petition with the companies, with said company dated 28th day of April 2014. Said underground electric conduit shall be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed therewith, marked Prestav Winthrop, Mass., Plan 164141, 16414207. The following are the public ways or parts of the ways along which the underground electric conduits above may be laid. Prestav National Grid to install 30 feet of 2- to 4-inch PVC from pole 131 Prestav across the street to the customer's property line for new service at 46 Groves Ave. What I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Council LeTerry, seconded by Council, Council Vice President, Davento. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Agreed by...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. You want a second?
Council President?
Yes.
Is there any way that we can, you know, see if we can continue this type of, you know, changing some of our lines and putting them in underground?
That's been looked at before you go. Can we take all of our lines in town and put them underground? We'll let you do this one if you do.
There's a lot of big cables that are on, connected to a lot of double poles and a lot of just different things. They look terrible, they're unsightly, they're in front of people's windows, and, you know, this could be something that we could try to start to make some kind of transition into underground, you know, wiring. This would be something that would be great for the town.
I am, I have, I'm not equipped to answer that right now.
But as you do projects, is there a process that you could bring it up, and is there some way that we could maybe start to try to do that in the future?
I believe that this is going underground because that already is underground, right, Steve, in that area? Or is it not?
It's not underground. They're eliminating two telephone poles in the new DCL parking lot of Prest Avenue. There's a new pad to illuminate, to power up the crosswides that will illuminate, people activate them, and the docked building is fed off a pole which did illuminate the parking lot before those two poles are going to be taken out, thus the underground conduits.
Okay, thank you. So I guess that's something we can look into, but...
Yeah, in the future.
I could figure it out when I go back with the person that handles the larger accounts.
Well, we're going to be doing some major renovations and underground work with that infrastructure and...
For a service that large, we would normally go underground because we have to feed a transformer that feeds that whole building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Council Mail that was postponed from the last meeting. It was a motion that the town council change the town bylaws to allow restaurants to serve alcohol without the requirement of food service during the establishment, during the visit to the establishment, but take any action relative thereto. That was, had been made and seconded and postponed. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Yeah?
I think that really needs to refer to rules because that's a very complicated process.
Motion by Vice President Davento to refer this motion to rules and ordinances. Is there a second?
No.
Second, and...
I mean, for...
We'll have it second, and then we'll discuss it.
That's fine.
The second? If there's no second? It's not referred to. Oh, you did, I'm sorry. Seconded by Council LeTerry. All those in favor, discussion on referring it to rules? None?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, I think it's, I don't think it's ready for a rules discussion. I think it's ready for an open discussion on the subject about what people think about it. But I think by narrowing it down to a committee at this particular point, you know, I think there should be a general discussion. I had a discussion with it last night at, you know, talking to people that were here for the licensing board, and we should have the planning board, and it should be a general discussion. It's a, you know, I remember when the town had nothing, there was no alcohol in town. This was even brought up at the licensing board last night. You know, the town once had no alcohol, other than in clothes, and then we went to 100 restaurants, and the world didn't fall apart. And then we went down to 25 restaurants, and now we have BYOBs. And it seems to me that there's an opportunity with young restaurateurs finding the town somewhat attractive to do business in, that we, you know, we provide this. It's the same way, and I think it's difficult at the first to think about it, but I think it deserves a general discussion among town before we, you know, among people before we, you know, move it down and put it into a committee. Town Manager, you got it?
Yes, I certainly wouldn't want to get in the way of a broader discussion. I think it's a very, you know, prescient topic right now in the town. But that said, I do think that it would require us to examine the ordinance itself, be specific with a motion that amends the ordinances properly and gets advertised accordingly. So there are procedural issues that need to be followed here. So for those matters, you know, I think process needs to be followed and referred to rules just to make sure the mechanics of it gets it right, notwithstanding the fact that it's certainly a subject that ought to be discussed in whatever form is appropriate for that.
We have a comment from the chairman of the board.
I think that after we had a hearing, ruled on it, and we had a meeting on rules on it, that people would know, you also have to have a public hearing here on it, and then anybody in town could come and speak on it, and get a general consensus.
So at this point, go ahead.
And that was my intent of referring to rules. This is a process that needs to be identified, the language needs to be exact, and again, it's more of a process. How, it has to be amended, how the, as we'll see coming up on the motion that's made for the change in Sunday hours, it's a four-step process governed by the state. So it's not, you know, I think we can have the general discussion of if you want it, if you don't want it, whatever, but in the meantime, we are going to need to lay out so that everybody in that discussion knows that these are the steps, this is the language, this is how it has to happen. There are no, there's no way around these events, so people aren't under the impression it's just a vote, it's just a hearing. And that's why, you know, the rules, I think in rules, we can come up with that process.
We have to make sure we coincide with 33B.
Yeah.
Because 33B runs all the alcohol...
Can I interrupt everybody here? You're on a great, you're on a great path, and I'm sure somewhere downstream will be very, very helpful. But right now, I don't even think it's necessary. I don't know if there's, you know, a public will to do it. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I sat down at licensing. I don't know if everybody over on that side of the street thinks it's a good idea, and I think that planning and the school committee and that, and you get a general consensus. And quite frankly, I don't know what rule I want to write because I don't even know if it's a good idea to do it. So I'm going to take my motion off the table, and I'll amend my motion to have a discussion on whether or not having restaurants serve... on whether or not having restaurants serve food, excuse me, serve alcohol without having to serve food is a topic of discussion for the council as opposed to a motion. And it doesn't have to go anywhere. I don't know if it's a good idea.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I'll amend my motion.
Excuse me?
So I'll withdraw my motion. Whatever you have to do to get across the street to get what I want done, I'm happy to do.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Do you want to withdraw your motion or amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion.
I'd like to amend your motion to say what?
To have a discussion on whether or not removing the prohibition of having restaurants serve food is a good idea.
Okay, you had, can we use the same verbiage you used before? Amend the motion to have a discussion as to whether to allow restaurants to serve food, to serve alcohol without food. Does that make sense?
Correct.
I have a second for the amendment. I'll second for the purpose of discussion. Discussion on the amendment. Actually, I'm gonna withdraw my second because I don't see a motion.
Oh, Council President.
Let's have, let's have a discussion. Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw my amendment and go back, I withdraw my second and go back to the main motion. Council Cal.
I was just, wanted to say that I was at the meeting last night as well at the licensing board, and there was quite an emphasis on wanting to keep food, you know, available for anyone that was drinking. Now, whether or not, you can't force anyone to order a meal, we understand that, but this shouldn't kind of go by the wayside that you could just open up a bar and not offer food. Do you know what I mean? That's not, that's not what you meant.
No, 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 no.
I mean, I want people to realize that.
Correct. And I think, I think the emphasis that was brought out of the licensing committee was a good point, you know? Our goal is to sell food and have alcohol, but I'm just looking at it and saying, my guess is that there are many occasions when people go in and have alcohol without food, and putting restaurants in a position to do that, and putting patrons in a position where that's required is, I don't know if, I don't know if it's a necessity. I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea. I heard the comments last night. It certainly brought my thoughts on the subject to a different point, but that's why I want to get a discussion and say, hey, you know, should we have to have, should we have a rule that says you have to order food when you sit down, and that's the rule, and enforce it? Or should we, you know, just, you know, make believe it doesn't happen?
In order to have a discussion on this, we could put it, we can leave it on the agenda, we can postpone it and let people know it's on the agenda. I mean, I don't see any other way unless we schedule a public hearing, and it's not appropriate to schedule a public hearing, I don't think, unless we're gonna take a vote. Council President. Vice President.
And I'm gonna go back to, that's why I think it needs to go to rules strictly for, we've got to get the layout of this. I'm not sure if the council has the authority to change that regulation. I believe it's the Licensing Commission that has the authority. So all we could ever be doing is maybe making a recommendation and maybe require a town referendum vote. We don't know those things at this point, so I'd hate to guide people in the belief that we are going in a direction that we can't go in, or what the, or that we know what the process is where we're going. Whether you're for it, against it, want to change it to percentages or whatever, there's a whole series of things come up, but I think we need to get a layout of what steps would have to be taken if this change, if any change were to occur.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, just, because we do have the authority. We rewrote the liquor law three to four years ago to put in the brown bag, and we rewrote the whole section. We changed all the fees, and we changed more than just putting in the brown bags. So it's our authority to write a bylaw.
And then the licensing board's authority.
The licensing board's authority to enforce that bylaw that we wrote.
And will write it to the council.
Yes.
Council President.
Council Baron.
I would say that let's just move it on to rules and ordinance for a discussion there, and then we just move to meeting.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to refer it to rules. Is there any further discussion on that?
I would be happy to remove my motion.
Set it off back.
That's all right. If someone else is interested, they'll come up with the terminology that'll bridge it so we'll have a better path. Right now, I'm not sure there's a strong desire to move forward on it itself.
Does anybody remember who seconded it, so we can withdraw on the second? This is like, two weeks ago.
I believe I, I may have seconded.
Okay.
I'm not positive.
I'll withdraw my second. Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn, and the second has been withdrawn. Thank you. Councilman Cory, there was a motion that you had to direct the contractors' building of the middle high school to employ 25% of employees from Winthrop.
Right.
The motion was postponed by Council of Lutere. There had been an amendment by Councilor, Council Vice President Delvento to move that to 10. That amendment was never voted because the whole thing was postponed. So where we sit now is we have a motion to direct the contractors' building, the high school, middle high school, to employ 25% of employees from Winthrop.
And the situation is that I think that needs to be amended because I believe the contractors already signed. There has been some discussion with asking them to use due diligence, to make best efforts of hiring Winthrop residents, and I'd like to amend the motion to state that, you know, all future major construction in the town of Winthrop, in signing a contract with any contractors or developers, we will use the phrase that they will use, best efforts to employ Winthrop residents in any dealings that we have.
Can you repeat that?
No.
So we're gonna ask the present contractor to...
I believe given it's already talked about.
In fact, we have asked, and we did get a report back from our project manager that, in fact, they intend to use best efforts. They've, when, at the hiring of this building contractor, they certainly had a discussion about looking at local hiring, and they'll have a job fair as well in the interest of making sure that they use their best efforts to hire locally. And so I feel that that, and I received that confirmation in writing today, so I feel confident that they intend very much to use their best efforts to look at local hiring.
Councilman Cory, could I ask you to withdraw your motion and make a new one?
I will draw my motion this time, and I will make a motion at the next meeting. And every perfectly working...
And in, Councilman Wayajin had seconded it, but where he's not here, we're gonna assume that the motion is withdrawn and we start another motion in a minute. Got that, Denise?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Motion by the town manager. Still on to old business, that the town established a special revenue, a special revolving account entitled, place that maintenance and improvements fund. Motion by the town manager, I move the town council establish a special revenue revolving account entitled, quote, place that maintenance and improvements fund, and in accordance with the provision of Chapter 68 of the Special Act of the General Court in the year 1917. This area is commonly known as town-owned open space property surrounded by the following streets, Cross, Veterans River, Paason, and Main Streets. Further, the purpose of this fund shall be to hold and disperse all rental funds and other such revenue earned by the usage and charges of this property, and that such funds shall be moved solely for the benefit of improvements and maintenance thereto. Any remaining fund balance shall be carried forward year to year. Do I have a motion?
To give you a report, the Rules and Orders Committee met on May 27, 7:35. Present were the three members of the Rules and Orders Committee, Councilors, myself, Councilor Baron, and Councilor Delvento. Also present was Councilors, President Peter Gill, Councilor Sanford, Councilor Mayo. Also present were Town Manager Jim McKenna and Tim Gordon as the CFO. Motion was made by Nick to recommend to the full council approval of this motion with stipulation that wherever the rents are collected, the funds will be used for the benefit of where they collect from the rents from. And that was seconded by Paul Baron, and it was voted unanimously. So therefore, out of the Rules and Ordinance Committee, I will ask that we recommend this motion for approval.
So the motion is from Rules and Orders, no second required, no second necessary. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Motion by Council of Mail was again postponed from the last meeting. No, I'm sorry, was referred to, the senior work program was referred to the Finance Commissioner that's still there. Okay.
Don't lose it.
Motion by Council of Mail to request the town manager to develop a town nighttime public parking sticker to allow for a fee for the town parking lots. I believe that was referred to DPW. And when we did the reports, Councilman, you hadn't arrived yet. Has that been...
No.
Okay. The next one was referred to DPW as well. The rules, the House vote one was referred to Planning Board, and the Planning Board is gonna have a meeting next Monday night to, it's a discussion meeting, not a policymaking meeting for that issue. Okay, any other old business? New business? By the, I'm sorry. At the request of the Winthrop Board of License Commission, I move that the town council accept and activate Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33B, as most recently amended, authorizing liquor license authorities to permit licensees to sell alcohol beverages at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday and so forth and so on, and take any action relative thereto. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Delvento. Any discussion? Refer to rules?
I don't know that we have to refer it to rules. I think there are four steps to this.
Right.
I think we can approve this concept here, but then it has to go through the licensing board for their approval as well, so.
Yeah, step, step one is that it must be accepted and activated in the community.
So I think that's what we can do, and if you want to send it to rules first, that's fine with me, but I...
No, that was actually the motion, but, okay. So on the motion, that the council will accept and activate Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33B, as most recently amended. So there is a motion that has been made and seconded to accept and activate. Any discussion?
Mr. President. And I don't want people getting scared. There are, in this process, there will be hearing. This is a process laid out by the Commonwealth for getting this started. This is, this is the first step to put it in front, and then the next, there'll be a next series of hearings and steps that have to occur, as well as application, and so I don't want anybody thinking this is just all of a sudden, they can start serving at 10 o'clock. This is gonna be a process to get it, if this should occur.
But does it, does it makes, all three of the further steps have to be done by the licensing authority, the legal licensing authority? Right. They wanted to come before rules, but it can now go to the local licensing authority. So yes, we have done it now, it's up to them to have the hearings.
If we pass this motion.
Right, yeah. If we pass it. Council Cal.
I just wanted to be a little clear on this. Is this to serve alcohol, or is this for, like, packaged to us to open to sell it?
No, the reasoning behind it is Sunday brunches. The restaurants that run brunches, Sunday brunches, want to be able to serve a Bloody Mary with the...
The restaurants, oh, okay.
Okay.
That's the theory.
So, so let me make, let me ask a question here. This is going for a hearing, where? Where is the public hearing for this?
This is now, this is now going to the, we are gonna accept and activate as a council. Now the Licensing Commission takes over.
They'll say...
The Licensing Commission will have the discussion, have the hearings. Our function is just accept and activate the law. Any further...
It's a process here. Step three is where the public hearings have to go.
Right.
So because this is a law, it's gonna go right to the Licensing Bureau, whereas my motion would have to go to rules.
This is a law that says if we accept this law...
Am I wrong?
No.
You know?
Just can I point something out?
Yes.
Yes, Jim. I, our bylaws also have the hours in it. Here regardless of what the state bylaws is, so we're accepting the state's concept. We're still gonna have to change our bylaw to coincide with it, but I think we can start deactivate the project with the Licensing Board and then change our bylaw to change the hours that we have in our bylaw, because our bylaw specifically gives hours as well.
And all this does is change the hour. It doesn't change the type of service, it's just changing the hour.
But it's gonna have to be done by rules coming with a motion as well to adopt that after we vote.
Right. And after licensing. And, Council?
What is the current hour right now for that?
Noon.
Noon time on Sundays.
Noon, you said noon time, is it actually?
Noon.
Noon.
And just to go back on, Councilman Cory said, what this does is this gives the concept to go to 10 o'clock. Licensing has to have hearings in their whole process to make recommendations. They could come back at 11 o'clock, and at that point, then we would take, if it even gets that far, they may say no out of the box, and it stays at 12. But whatever they come up with, we come then to the council for a vote of change of our bylaws in order to make work. So there's gonna be a lot of steps. This is just the ringing the doorbell. Let's see if anybody answers. Jim?
Just the fact that we, and I consider myself in this boat too, that we're, we're all learning this as we go here, and we're not sure what we're, the package is, is this. I'm gonna move my counsel way to waive this till the next meeting so I could get a better understanding of it.
Council of, yeah, Lutere has exercised his right to move this to the next meeting. And at that point, if you want, will I invite Don Kearney from the Licensing Commission?
Yes, please.
Okay. Also, the License Commission says they've had several requests about licensing of livery, livery services. Livery services are different from taxi services, and I don't know all of the ins and outs of them, but they would like to, to have the ability to regulate livery because they feel that there are some liveries that might be running now that aren't following the rules. So they have put together a sample attached, and if somebody would like to make a motion to postpone that, we'll have Don Kearney in for both issues at the next meeting.
I will.
Mr. Gett, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, before you do that, could I just state that they've been, they've been working on this for a long time, and there are some clear distinctions. And the reason for their action is because they are trying to, they are trying to cut down the possibility of a tremendous amount of livery vehicles that are just a license plate slapped on a car. And in Winthrop, the cab drivers are required, the cab companies are required to have a location, physical paying rent location, and they want to get the ball going on a set of motions, excuse me, a set of rules that will regulate so we don't have, you know, 50 guys leaving their apartment and running over to the airport because they have a livery license. So I think Donald would explain the same thing, and I think we want to get to a point where we're starting the motion of saying, okay, we have these rules for cabs, we want to make sure that our rules for livery take into consideration all the things we're going to need to protect ourselves from having a runaway, we're very, very close to the airport, and I think our insurance rates are less than in East Boston, and I know this is a, this is a common topic over on their side of the street all the time, you know? And you have to get a livery license, and they have to have a schedule, they just can't, you know, you can't, it's like a scheduled service, you just can't call one and say, send it over. So they're trying to differentiate, and I'd like to see them move it forward.
They have, they have provided us with a sample livery license, package. They've provided us with a sample livery license package that they would, their request is that we look this over, this is what they would like to do for the town of Winthrop, as Craig said, Council Mail said. This livery service is being operated out of apartments, out of houses, and it's illegal without them having the ability to put some muscle in it. We have people putting a livery plate on their car and running out, in and out of the airport. The airport seems to be the concern of these, of these liveries. The airport seems to be the concern of these liveries, and they're able to do it without having a license. So we could either postpone it to the next meeting, if somebody wants to exercise that right, or we could, I think what their request was to refer this to Rules, and they would come in and talk to Rules.
Motion to refer to Rules.
Motion to refer to Rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Vice President Delbento. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. You have it?
Yeah, we have it on the drop box.
Oh, okay. I believe the next thing is, I had, the committee, committee reappoint, committee terms expired June thirtieth, and I had circulated a list of all of those reappointments and new appointments, and I'd be happy to take a motion to do them all at once as opposed to individually.
Was it in the package?
You're going to read them?
Yeah. I can read them if you want.
Yeah, I think you should read them.
All right. These all will expire on twenty seventeen, and they are reappointments unless I specify otherwise. Beautification Committee, Alan Peabody Chairman. Board of Appeals, Brian Beatty Chairman, and Irene K. Dwyer. Board of License Commission, Maureen Canavan, Gerald P. Ogus. Conservation Commission, Norman Hyatt, Steve Machinsky, Karen Nguyen. Historical Committee, Judy Bono. Memorials Committee, Richard Farino, Paul Flanagan. Planning Board, Peter Rux Chairman, Gina Demento, David Stasio. Scholarship Committee, Tangi Dignall, that should be Tangi Cuffuny, sorry about that. Jim Nimblet is a new member. Winter air pollution noise and hazards. Anthony Mahajad Chairman, Robert Driscoll Senior, Jerome Felbo, John Battagiano, and Rich Boyagen as the town council liaison, which we did last week, but we're defining a term now. Winter Commission on Disabilities, Leader Jelonas Chairperson, Gerald DeFranza, Linda McGeorge. Winter Cultural Council, we have three new ones, Mary Ann Salza, James Beely, and Guy Hillman, and two reappointments, Goldie Boncorry and Linda Rainville Treasurer. Under the Board of Assessors, Paul Franzese Esquire, reappointed.
Motion that we take them all except for Goldie at once?
Second.
Okay. You want to say that? Okay. So we'll take every one that other mentioned except for Goldie Boncorry to confirm the appointments. Motion by councillor Terry, seconded by councillor Callan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Motion for Goldie Boncorry.
Motion by Goldie Boncorry.
I refuse myself from voting on this move.
Hey, why? Okay, seconded by councillor Callan to a firmly reappointment of Goldie Boncorry. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Public comments. Yes.
Done. Mr. Masur.
First of all, I want to, I have two things to pay me. I wanted to just remind everybody that graduation is this Friday evening. If you'd like to have your presence there, if you wish to be in attendance, the graduation is at six o'clock on Friday night, and right now, the weather forecast looks like we should be okay for outside. Second, I'd like to take a moment to be a citizen and brag about a person that's very close to me, which is my wife. My wife, last week, received the unsung heroin award for the State House. She was the Speaker of the Leo's nomination, and she received it, and I was able to go in and just be the husband and be proud to see her receive that award, along with a hundred other, hundred other women. They were the unsung heroines throughout the state. So I wanted to publicly congratulate her for her community service and her work.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Masur. Councillor Mayo?
Yeah, I had this really wild dream that Suffolk Downs, that Suffolk Downs was going to come in and, you know, warmly greet us on our agreement. I know it was a long, hard battle, but I've been thinking about it over the last couple of days and realizing that the one or two years that it took us will pale in comparison thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years from now. And I actually think that through some legislative, executive, administrative action, we should establish with the other surrounding communities, including Revere, an ombudsman committee, like the MWRA Advisory Committee, or the Airport Hazards Committee, and we should ask them to, if they win, to, you know, entertain that and make it a valued part of their listening, and I think it would go a long way to help what will be much more important than our negotiation, our coexistence. So I don't know what the process is, it always confuses me, so, but whatever it is, on whatever level it has to be done, I think we should start that immediately and make sure that we're protected from day one with our thoughts and concerns, and we should take a great amount of time and effort in helping orchestrate this with Chelsea, and Revere, and East Boston, and Saugus, and all those communities, so that we can have a good firm grip on what's going to happen in the future. So I hope someone will get behind that along with me.
We'll need to do a home rule petition, chairman Mayo, you'll be the chairman of that committee, and organize that home rule petition with Mr. McKenna's assistance. Thank you.
I take that back.
Just a couple of other important dates, Mr. Masur, the groundbreaking at Winter Pie is twelve thirty on the twenty-fourth, Viking Pride's final event before the ball hits the building is the twenty-eighth, I believe.
That's correct.
And I think that councillor Delbento, you had a reminder, was it you, parking stickers expire?
Yeah, that's my standing issue. Just so people know, the parking stickers are going to expire July first. Usually there may be a day of leniency, but over the last few days, it's easier to get it than to have to rush around the fourth of July weekend.
And I want to say, there's some great work going on, streets being dug up, holes being dug, lots of dirt being made, but I got to say, I have to say that I was watching those contractors today, and they work like crazy, and they clean like crazy, they leave everything done when they need, very, very impressed with them. Thank you, supervision, Steve. If there is no, yes.
I just wanted to know with town manager, if there was any movement or any new information regarding the ferry?
As I reported earlier, I'm meeting with the MBTA, the head of the MBTA, to see if I can encourage some funding for that, and to incorporate, you know, their vision into that aspect. So hopefully, not soon enough.
Did they just recently work with Lynn?
Yes. Yes, but it wasn't the MBTA, it was the Seaport Bond Council that funded that for one million dollars over two years to fund that ferry.
Councillor Masur.
And also to the town manager, any feedback from the report from the Logan Airport study that came out? Well, there's been some discussion that's come along about it. I think that we're, we're sending a letter to Suzanne Condon thanking her for coming to Winter, but also to explore some questions that were raised at that meeting, and provide us with additional information, perhaps even coming to Winter and sharing some additional data.
If she had committed to do that, I guess we have to keep her pre-confirmed.
Right, so we drafted that letter for your signature, councillor president.
So is that.
Yeah, and hopefully that, so the dialogue will continue on that report.
Anything else?
Just to acknowledge, I did receive a letter, as I think we all did, from John Todd at the Land and Property right over here on seventeen to twenty-one Pauline Street, and as well as some of the tenants, and what I'd like to do is just open up a little dialogue maybe with them, and with the chief, and maybe town manager on some of the issues that they've had for concerns since.
I referred it back to TSEC chairman.
Okay, yeah.
And I believe he's had dialogue with councillor, with Mr. Todd.
Yeah, I mean, and some of the people that are complaining of the new implementation were the ones that originally drafted the petition for the implementation of that one-hour parking.
Right.
So, you know, it's a TSEC position that we don't look at anything unless it's had a twelve-month implementation period, and usually sometimes within that, we see it go away, because it becomes useful. And the biggest complaint was school parking in front of these businesses, and, you know, next year it's not going to get any better, it's only going to get, you know, worse, as we have now more teachers coming to this area. So we'll certainly speak to the complainants, not in the TSEC format, and then we'll advise the town manager, and if he orders us to do something different than our policy says, we'll certainly carry that up.
Maybe if we go, as we go forward into September, we can encourage some of the teachers to park, and maybe the municipal parking lots in and around. I know, I know it's been difficult for the tenants, some of them work emergency rooms, nurses, split shifts, and they're getting tagged, so I have to have a little compassion for their.
Well, you know, we only made the restriction on one side of the street.
Right.
And I do observe out my office window, there is people not utilizing the other side of the street because there is open spots over there. So, you know, the restriction is only for those business zones, eight to five, you know, so we certainly do have compassion, but.
Yeah.
Again, then the other side, you know, what stops this from being a revolving circle?
Yeah, no, I understand.
How to get a petition.
Chief, is there a petition for the other side to implement the same kind of restrictions? I had heard that.
The original petition was for both sides of Pauline Street to have the one-hour restriction, Monday through Saturday, eight to six. TSEC voted, and the Rules and Ordinance adopted our recommendation, only one side be restricted for that one-hour parking.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor?
Sorry, Chief. And just a quick thing, I see the superintendent still here, I do want to thank him and the school committee for providing us all kinds of information on the school budget, and I know the budget was passed, which means your appropriation is set. My understanding is still a little vague on, I watched the school committee meeting last week, and there was the discussion on user fees, and if the no-user fees were in the budget or not, but I know I've been working with the town manager and the superintendent to try to, and with the council president, to try to provide some relief for the taxpayers, for the parents, and help eliminate the user fees, so I hope that that discussion does go forward. I'm not sure how this budget, how the appropriation we gave you, what budget you guys had last voted on, if it has user fees or not, but if it does, I'm hoping over the next couple of weeks, some sort of resolution can be made that we're providing relief to the parents, if at all possible. And I know the superintendent has done everything he can to try to help make those as low as possible, so I appreciate his efforts in that.
Chief, did you?
Yeah, real quick, over Memorial Day weekend, I brought my mother down to my father's grave, and anybody that hasn't gone down to Cross Street Cemetery, it's unbelievable. You know, a few years ago, there was no working water down there, there was a lot of criticism when they killed some trees down. I think it says a lot for the towns, because you've dragged to other towns, they've really neglected their cemeteries, and I'll tell you, there's an awful lot of residents in town have family members in our cemetery, and another kudo to the public, so it was terrific.
Actually, I wanted, I was just going to say prior to that, because I just thought we should just thank, what was Master Kelly and Richie Honan, they did a fabulous job on the Memorial Day event, you know, it was very, very nice, there were a lot of people there, the weather was almost a little iffy at the beginning, but, you know, it turned out to be a nice day, and I think everybody really loves to come down there.
The Logan sign was done very well.
Thank you, thank you, Rose and Richie.
Councillor Vice President.
And just to capitalize on what the chief started with, these are things that for years have been neglected, the lower-profile roads, a lot of infrastructure sidewalks, the cemetery roadways, those are things that are now way past their life expectancy, the design lives, most of our streets are, and I know people, hey, none of us like to pay for anything, but for years, we went, you know, we went a long time without making any improvements, and fixing things, and keeping, keeping up, so, you know, like the cemetery shows, anybody, you know, drive through there, it's amazing, I went to a funeral nine or ten months ago, and was bouncing all over the place in there, in the car, and, you know, now it's a nice, nice road, but you have to spend money to keep these things up, and the concept of not spending money, although none of us want to pay it, only comes back to bite us harder, and as we're seeing with the condition of our roads, and, you know, we're starting to make some strides in getting some projects out, but for the years that all these projects didn't get done, it's put us in the position we're in right now to be aggressive in getting these projects out and going, and make the town look better. I mean, take a look right down some of the older side streets that are messin', and take a ride down Walden Street, you can see the difference. Do you want to be like Walden Street town, or do you want to be driving our roads and complaining about the puddles every day, and being happy you didn't have to pay for anything, but bouncing anywhere you go? So this is my two cents.
I think we're hearing that, you certainly are, Linda, on the day-to-day business and the real estate business, but people that I've met, we have four new neighbors in my neighborhood, and they're tremendous, and they think that Winter is the best-kept secret in the world, they all moved here from out of town, and those of us who live here are seeing Winter improve, but those of us, those who are discovering this community are really impressed, and we need to do as Nick said, and as Steve is doing, we need to keep on that, on that upward road.
My father told me as a kid, he asked me why the big black fence was around the cemetery, and I said, I didn't know why, he said, because people are dying to get in.
Wow. I thought that nobody was. No, one second, if we could ask Steve to, I know down at, in the center, there's been a lot of work going on with the pavers, and it's, it's looking great, but it's painstaking, it looks like it's a lot of labor, and if you could just explain to the people that it takes a while to get it, and that it really hasn't, we haven't had the opportunity to maintain it like we could have over the last thirty years.
Right, it is a time-consuming task, to give, take out oftentimes three to four pavers to replace one, just the way they're put together. We tried in the past to try to use a colored spent, as you can see, it didn't hold up, it never really blended in right, so we're trying to make, you know, make the repairs more permanent and better for the town. Hopefully, it's not too far out, you know, the center is in need of a restoration project, roadways, if that comes to fruition, I'm hoping to use a stamped concrete or a stamped pavement as opposed to the pavers, because they're really not New England weather-friendly. But we're going to finish this process, we do have the French Square Market coming back, and we're doing our best to pay for that.
Thanks, it looks great.
Isn't that the thing?
Anything else? Councillor Mayo?
Did they mention that French Square Market?
Yeah, you weren't here.
Anything else? If not, take a motion for adjournment. Seconded by Vice President Delbento, seconded by, anybody else? Councillor Sanford. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Unanimous, thank you.